The FY 26 School Maintenance Grant application is included in this. This is a $50,000 grant that the district would be required to cost match, and it would go toward the cost of our chiller replacement at Menucha Junior High. And then also, the 2026 Employee Benefit Plan Renewal is included in consent. And the committee is making this recommendation after reviewing our previous claims, as well as projections for the upcoming year. And we feel very confidently that this approach to have a fiscally sound decision, but also consider the cost burden on employees while maintaining strong benefits, is represented in what we're reporting forth this evening.
Thank you. Why does it...? Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our action item, 4.01, 2025 Tentative Tax Levy: Approval of Public Notice and Established Public Hearing.
Okay, Mary Robinson, Chief School Business Official, will provide a few brief updates on the tentative tax levy this evening.
Hello. Tonight, we're asking that the board approves the levy in tentative form. I presented a preliminary look at the 2025 levy in the October Board meeting, so I'm just going to go over a few changes. As a reminder, the equalized assessed value of all the property in our district plays a very large role in determining what our final levy looks like. We've seen increases ranging from 5% to nearly 10% in the last few years. So, the first update that I want to talk about is the overall increase to the Grundy County EAV. As you recall, the board approved a tax agreement at the last Board meeting with Equistar. One of the factors of that agreement was that we would see a large increase in the property value for the 2025 tax year. So with this increase, Equistar will pay a larger portion of our tax revenue, and then that helps decrease our overall tax rate. So I've increased the Grundy County projection, the EAV, by the 24 million, and now that shifted our estimate to Grundy to 17%, where it was 13.9% last month. And then, overall, this changes the overall to 12%, which last month I had projected 10%. So with that, when we look at our scenarios, again, we're looking now at the far right to the high projection. I've made that now 12% because that's what we're estimating. And you can see, if you scroll down on the right side to the box that's bolded, that our estimated tax rate will be 3.16. Last month, that number was 3.18. So when we're looking at the tax rate history, I've gone ahead and updated this with that 3.16 number. Again, over the last 10 years, this is our lowest tax rate, but it's even more of a drop than we were expecting last month. And then this will be our tentative levy. The tentative operating levy is 41 million. Just as a reminder, our current budget, our current year budget, is 79 million. So although 41 is a large number, it is only typically about 54%, 55% of our total budget. So tonight, we ask that the board approve the tentative levy and set a public hearing for December 15th, which is the day of our next Board meeting, at 6:00 PM.
Questions or comments? Just real quick before I do this, the action does not state the setting of the tentative levy or of the public hearing. Does that need to be included in that statement?
We should... Yes, we are setting the...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I need a motion to approve the 2025 Tentative Tax Levy as presented and to set the public hearing and possible adoption of the 2025 levy on December 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second. And then, on December 15th...
At 6:00 PM, we'll have the hearing.
And then everybody... And then the public will get, like, this tax rate history graph somewhere.
Correct. So they will see...
Great.
And then we'll also present fund balances during that hearing. Anyone can speak if they want to speak on it. And then during the normal meeting is when the board would be asked to approve it.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Next, we'll do the 399 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Okay, tonight, we are seeking approval on the collaborative, collective bargaining agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Number 399. We have actively been engaged in renegotiating a contract with the 399 group that represents our maintenance workers. These negotiations concluded, and we have successfully brought forth a tentative agreement, which is presented to you this evening. The 399 members ratified this earlier this month, and it is our recommendation that the board approves the collective bargaining agreement as presented.
Questions or comments on this action item? If not, I need a motion to approve the 399 Collective Bargaining Agreement as presented.
I'll motion to approve the bargain agreement as presented.
Second. I'll do a roll call, please.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our discussion information items. 5.01, the 2025 Illinois School Report Card.
Okay, as we've shared with the board previously, and Dr. Saab also shared at the November Board meeting, at the end of... I'm sorry, at the October Board meeting, at the end of October, the Illinois School Report Card became public on October 30th. And this is a yearly report from the Illinois State Board of Education that provides information about the performance of every district and every school in the state of Illinois, every public school district. And it provides a snapshot of several data points compared to statewide averages for every public school in the state. And it also allows us to look at trends over time. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a quick preview of what one would see when they navigate to this illinoischoolreportcard.com. This is kind of the landing page, the homepage, and on the side, you see the variety of metrics. What you see on the front page here, if you search "our school district", is the district snapshot, which just gives a general overview of those metrics that the state monitors overall. And then down that left-hand column, you see all of the different areas that one can navigate, dive in much deeper. So we won't go through all of the detail this evening. That would take, you know, hours and hours. But you're welcome to explore. And then other features on this site is that not only can you look at trend data, you can look compared to the state averages, and you can compare to other districts. So we're going to take just a quick peek at some of the highlights in each of the areas. Underneath the Academic Progress tab, you will see an overview of proficiency and then the growth in both ELA, math, and then the science achievement profiles. Each of those tiles can be navigated inside of there further. And it gives you just a general overview. So what stands out on this page when you take a quick glance is that our ELA growth for IAR, which is the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, is above that kind of center point of 50, which we would see. So that means our students, based on where they started to where they are now, are growing at a greater rate than, on average, at the state... There's peers across the state. And then also for math as well. Mrs. McCarroll's going to go into the academic data a little bit more deeply in the next report, so I won't spend a great deal of time here, but I wanted to show you what is publicly available on the report card. I did want to remind everyone of the changing performance levels that the state has identified and dividing up those proficiency benchmarks. So this is... This colored spectrum here gives the levels of performance from below proficient, approaching proficient, proficient, and above proficient. And proficiency is meaning that a student is on track in their learning. And so when the state redefined these benchmarks, they looked across the entire spectrum, meaning is a child on track for college and career readiness throughout their entire continuum in public education? So the issue that the state was dealing with previously was that standards were misaligned. So there was different benchmarks and kind of cut scores for those proficiency levels as you looked across the whole K-12 school system in the state, all the way up to that college and career readiness benchmark. And the new goal is to have something that is aligned from elementary all the way through high school and has that alignment to the true expectations for readiness. So this is what we see with this year's data, is essentially we have a new baseline. And so if you look on the report card, you're going to see... You're not going to see the trend years' data. You kind of have to go back and dig into the archive data to see previous years. But when we're looking at proficiency, we see this 2025 going forward. So in many ways, we have defined a new proficiency benchmark for ELA and math. And then the tiles that are portrayed on this next slide here in terms of achievement profiles, we can compare ourselves to the state. That's the dark green bar, and we are the light green bar. So you can see our proficiency levels are above the state averages. And then there's greater depth that you can explore in terms of looking at the scatter plots. How do we compare to other districts across the state? And on a proficiency level, I have the state values listed in the table down in the bottom right. For ELA proficiency for state is 52.4, and for our district, it's 56.3. And then math proficiency, 38.4, and then our district is higher at 42.5. We did take a look at comparison districts that are comparable because of proximity, demographics, size, or because of similar financial standing in terms of their tax base and their spending per pupil. And in comparison, we're not where we want to be in achievement in terms of proficiency yet. But the good news is that we're growing at a greater rate. So... Click, and the same for math. So Mrs. McCarroll will go into this a little bit more deeply, but the takeaway here is that our growth that we are experiencing in IAR for ELA and for math is at a greater rate than our comparable peers and what we see as what we would expect the state number to be at 50. But we're growing. So that means that's a good sign that we're moving in the right direction with our growth numbers. Okay, sorry, I have two different screens going here. All right, the next tab that we are going to look at... Oops, sorry, I wanted to go back one. The trend line for the growth that you see on the screen displayed there, it shows you our growth over the years. And you can see that we have a steady increase in how we are moving the amount of growth from last year, from 2024, to this year. So that is a positive indicator of the direction that we're moving with academic progress. The District Environment tab is the next one that I just wanted to give you a quick glimpse of. This looks at not only five essentials, but early learning, school finance, the financing of the district, the average class size, and a lot of the other factors that the state looks at is like this is kind of the whole picture of that learning environment and all of these pieces that are created there. One thing that I did want to mention here is the early learning. This is an area that we're looking at and having a lot of conversations about. What you're looking at at this slide is the percentage of students who are deemed as ready for kindergarten. So this is by the kids' assessment that is administered by observation of... by our teachers of our students. And when we're looking at the percentage of our students who are ready and the number of development areas, you can see that there's some areas where we are taking a closer look. For example, our comparison of students who are being identified as ready in the social and emotional development compared with the state, that's 44.8 compared to the state of 58.7. Language and literacy development, 37.6 in our district, and then 49.5 at statewide average. And then math, 36.5 to 36.9 comparison with the state. So there's definitely a lot that goes into this from, you know, how we are viewing readiness to the outreach that we can do with our partners and our families in terms of early learning readiness. But I wanted to make mention of it now because this has connected to several other conversations that we have been having. Another slide that I wanted to stop at briefly was district finances, and this was operating expense per pupil. So what you can see is that trend over time, the district operating expense per pupil and instructional spending and operational spending continues to remain well below the state average. So that definitely speaks to the board and the district's fiscal responsibility. It also speaks to our availability of the resources that we have just in comparison from a tax base. We did do some comparison data, looking at some of those comparators that we had looked at with other school districts to see how do we line up? So if we're going to be looking at the amount of resources that we have, and we're looking at the performance and outcomes of our students, where are there differences, whether it's in spending or not? And then what are we doing with districts who are similar to us? There is a big range of the districts that we had identified to take a look at because they had some similarities, just in terms of that EAV that is available to the districts and that tax base that they draw from. Some very large differences. On average, there's a 416 million EAV compared to our district of a 305 million, 305.8 million EAV. So we do have less to work with, so we have to do more with what we have. And you can see how the spending breaks down to comparing us to state and then us compared to districts who are similar to us because they are close by or have similar demographics and size. So it's something that is... It's just a relevant part of the story when we look at all of the resources that we have available and then how we're using those resources towards supporting our student outcomes and supporting our staff.
So the...
Yeah, go ahead.
Go back to the last...
Sure.
So the box on the right, the structural... The last two, there's instructional spending per pupil. And instructional and operational. So how do they... The state values of almost 12,000 and 20,000. Do you know how they came up with that? I mean, because we're low, right? I mean, that's...
We are low. I mean, we are low, but relatively speaking...
I mean, such a rural state. I mean, you've got Chicago there, but the rest of the state of Illinois is very rural. I just... Those numbers just seem...
There are districts within mere miles of us that have double the EAV that we have. So there are districts within a stone's throw that have more than double the EAV that we have. So that means you have more resources to work with. And then if you go in any other direction, it really depends on the tax base, and that's just how the state of Illinois funds schools. So it really, you know, the EBF model, the evidence-based funding model, has tried to close those gaps, which is doing its job of what it's meant to do. But when it comes down to it, if you don't have as many resources to pull from, you're not spending as much per student. So you know, you have to... We live within our means, and it's, you know, based on what we have available to us. And I don't know, Mary, did you want to add anything as to why there's such a discrepancy or difference? That's real data. Yeah. And just like there's districts who have a much larger EAV than us, there's districts within 10, 20 miles that have 100 million less. So I mean, it's very much relative to that specific community where you will see those spending numbers be so vastly different. So yes, we want to maximize the resources that we have, but at the end of the day, we can only use what we have available. And then we look at districts who are spending... Who have an amount of resources similar to what we have, and we say, okay, what are they accomplishing with the resources that they have? And is there something we can learn from them? Because they have a similar budget, and they have similar kids or somewhat similar kids. So is there something that they're doing better than us? Or, you know, are we doing something better? And that's why when we talk about growth, for example, if we could be... We are getting better growth, comparatively speaking, than some districts who have even a greater budget. You know, it's very relative.
So in all the... And I might have missed it here, but are there... Is there data that shows, like, our school, seven schools, 4,000 kids, 4,500 kids, with these, with a EAV lower than the state value and how we're doing compared to...
There is. And I suppose I...
Comparing apples to apples if you're...
Yeah, and I can definitely share that with you, and I can also display that there. The best view to look at it is essentially on a scatter plot. And that is available to see here. We also have done an analysis with a partner that we can... I can share that report with the board. But it essentially shows, like, in the quadrants of whose EAV is similar and how are they performing in relation. And so there are districts who are very much in our neck of the woods, who are getting similar-type results, worse results, or greater-than results. And so you can kind of see where we fall in those quadrants. That is somewhat available online, and then I can also share a report that we have, too. I can also bring that back publicly if you'd like. Okay, another area, average class size. You can see we've maintained a great level of consistency, having low class sizes. Looking across the, you know, state, there's somewhat of a, you know, comparison, strong comparison there. And this is just a kind of a quick snapshot. The next slide is a quick view at the students. And that is essentially everything from enrollment to the demographic makeup of our students, to our special learner population, such as EL, homeless students with IEPs. The general trend, if you dig into many of these tiles, is that we have a stabilized... We have a kind of a declining enrollment, but stabilized enrollment, meaning it's been pretty steady. And we've had some kind of small uptick in our special populations and also in free and reduced students with IEPs. And, you know, we look at ourselves compared to the state, but, you know, that's vastly different, as you said. You know, there's rural all the way to urban comparatively speaking in this data. And then we also look at ourselves compared to some of these comparison districts, which I keep referring to, just to see, you know, what are their trends looking like? And how does that compare? Because if we're looking at, you know, not only the resources that we have, but the student populations that we serve, we want to see how things are going in other districts where they have similar populations or similar trends emerging. This one highlights just specifically enrollment, which I was referring to. So you can see that we've very much stabilized from the kind of the high point of enrollment that the district experienced with the boom in residential development, which is a very good thing. So now we are catching our breath to hold up, to kind of catch up. We anticipate that staying pretty steady and then, of course, keeping our pulse on all residential development to see when that might start filling back in, not just by birth rates, but by, you know, residential development where we might see more students coming into the district.
How much development is going on?
There's a great deal of development that I think is in different stages. So there's some that are actively building currently that are... You know, we're seeing some slow, steadier tics up in student enrollment. We do have projections from several of the developments. So now it's just a matter of how does that housing market go? I think where we're seeing the most action with actual move-ins in students is near Jones Elementary. And then what's kind of up and coming, if you drive down Seal Road in Shorewood, you see that development is well underway. So... But it'll be some time before we see houses going up and students moving in. And then there's quite a long list of other developments that are at some phase, earlier phase in the development conversations or in the moving forward. So that's between all of our municipalities and totality. I think it's definitely going to be much of a steadier, kind of slower trend as opposed to the big, huge, you know, influx that the district experienced with the massive kind of residential boom, you know, over the past 15 years. I think it will be something that we can absorb unless we start seeing some, like, greater projections, you know, really ramping up. And then at some point, we may need to look at the population and the trends in each individual building. But for right now, we're okay. And we do have very stable class sizes. We have very, very good class sizes comparatively speaking. And we're able to support those learners when they join us. All right. Accountability. Mrs. McCarroll's going to speak to this, but this is essentially the state's designation, summative designation, that takes into account a variety of metrics. So overall, like I said, what we're seeing is positive growth from our schools in a variety of the metrics. All of our schools are commendable or higher, with two of our schools having reached that exemplary cutoff, that kind of benchmark there. And some of our schools are, you know, hot on the trail with their growth that they've demonstrated. Mrs. McCarroll's going to go a little bit more into depth of what we see in those trends. And I just kind of borrowed her chart here to just give you a preview of that, to say that even if our... You know, we have two schools that did achieve exemplary status, Menucha Elementary and Walnut Trails Elementary. And we have all of our buildings that have shown great growth in the metrics. It's a variety of metrics that are used to come up with that summative designation. So that's a very, very positive indication of the hard work of our leaders, of our teams, of our teachers, and our support staff. And I think it's very encouraging that we're seeing the kind of the fruits of that labor start to show itself in some cases, and it's in a little bit of an earlier form. And then in other cases, it's really starting to kind of move to that threshold. And then, of course, like any other conversation, the state is redesigning the accountability system. So we're engaging in those conversations now so that come next year, we can explain and understand what, you know, any kind of changing labels or kind of factors of how they calculate those designations come across. So I think the most important thing here is that we continue to, you know, keep our eyes on the prize, use our internal measures, and then understand what that translates to for this outward view that the state does for the accountability perspective. But I think you'll see in the academic data presentation and in all of our other strategic plan updates, there's very strong indications that we are moving in the right direction. We're seeing those results. Our teams are working very, very hard, and our kids are rising to the challenge. So we're... We know that with that kind of increased expectation, increased accountability for all of us, does come stress, does come extra work, but we're rising to the challenge, and we're seeing that reward start to come through in terms of growth and our achievement. So we're proud to share that. And I think we're going to move straight over into academic if there's any questions.
From that one, I just want to say, like, pretty shockingly good, I would say, that three schools went 10 points or more on their growth in a year. Like, that's pretty incredible. It shows that the hard work you're, you know, relaying to us is happening and really affecting the student achievement and just overall outward showing to our state and our community of the work that's being done in the buildings.
Absolutely. And just because that label of exemplary isn't there yet, it doesn't, you know, negate the fact that that real effort is being put in, and that's translating. And then when you hear the updates from all of the other leaders, whether it's about chronic absenteeism or, you know, the efforts to outreach to our families, to the everything from curriculum and instruction, that's all adding up into this bigger picture to create the conditions for the learning and the, you know, achievement to occur. So I think that's very valid, and you'll see Mrs. McCarroll refer to this again because it is very important. And each of our schools has had some time to digest this with their school improvement teams and then take pieces of this to communicate with their staffs to celebrate the hard work and to also say, hey, guys, we're on the right track. We, you know, this is... It's tough work, but we're doing it, and we are... We're accomplishing a lot. So we're just continuing the charge.
So, sorry, I don't know if you're... Are we moving on? I wanted to go back to the report card real quick.
Sure.
Just to let you know what slide I'm at. I'm on District Environment and School Finances. And then all the way at the bottom here, there's kind of a chart. I wanted... I see Mrs. Monroe in the audience. I wanted to make sure we get the due to going to exemplary. I think that deserves a second or third conversation, so that's fantastic. What I'm looking at, and I just looked at this, and it made my brain work, is taking away the primary center, because it's a different facility. The two schools where the expenditure per student are the highest are the exemplary schools. So for the elementaries, the two schools where we're spending the most per pupil in the building are Walnut and MES. And then Jones and Ochs are a little below that on the per-student expenditure. And I want to be careful how I phrase this because I see that as a really interesting opportunity that we're getting a lot for what we're spending. We talked about how we're pretty low on the per-student expenditure statewide. We talked about how we're, we're pretty low on the per student expenditure statewide. So I wanted to point out that the, the schools that are, were spending the most per student are also performing at a really high level for that expenditure. And I know we've discussed many times, both in the meetings and in committees, that each school is its own kind of piece and has different needs and, and processes. So I wanted to make sure that we're, we're aware here that when we're spending the money and when we're doing the programs, we do expect this return and this, this progress, and we're seeing it. And so that, that's something that struck me on this page that I wanted to make sure we spent a minute viewing. So.
So I can speak to it. On this, if you were live on this report card site and you clicked on not district finances, but school finances, you could see the breakdown of the costs of the instructional expenditure per student in each of the buildings and how that equates to the district average. And so what you're saying is true, but it's all very relative. So for example, Jones Elementary, the spending per student is 14,340. And then Walnut Trails Elementary, it's 15,238. And so there could be a variety, it's close, right? So it's not like one school is absorbently higher. And really what it comes down to is what's the bulk of our budget, salary and benefits. So one could be that it's just a difference in the number of, you know, veteran staff or staff that have advanced degrees or hours. And so like the, the salaries are higher because we staff pretty consistently and use, you know, equitable like staffing ratios. Now, there are differences at times because of the cohort size. So where you, we might end up having three sections at one building when that other building maybe has 10 less kids and that fits in two. So then that, there you go, that adds on a whole nother salary. So it's, it's actually pretty relatively speaking. And so what, and the other resources are generally evenly spread, particularly at the levels. So elementary and then intermediate is its own thing, and then junior high is its own thing. So what you're saying is true. And I think you could do a, a big study on that, even looking at other districts. But in this case, I think it's all, it's all very much, it's almost all touching that district average line, which is right, right above that 14,000 mark. So we have some who are a little above and some who are a little below. But it's, aside from the primary center, they're all pretty, pretty even, pretty close.
Other questions and comments for this presentation? I know it's going to continue on with Mrs. McCarroll.
Yeah, and I mean, obviously there's so, so much data here. So we, you know, we can't take it all in at once. But when we do our strategic plan updates and each of the leaders brings, you do see a lot of these points revisited or utilized in the sense of kind of reporting progress. And now we'll focus on goal one with academics. But if there's additional questions or you want to dig in deeper to any one of these areas, even, you know, you can go in and look at schools and everything like that. But we're happy to have any conversations or bring back additional, you know, specific analysis if the board chooses. So now we'll move on to academic.
Data review is your favorite day.
I know. I told people I promised I wouldn't take too long, but it's kind of exciting looking at the data. So just waiting for it to show up. Give me a second. There we go. Yep, it's thinking. Yep, it's nice and small. I'll make it a little bigger because my eyes are getting older. All right, so got a little academic data presentation for you all. And feel free to stop me and ask questions along the way. We're going to take a glimpse at our NWEA MAP data, our school report card data. I'll touch a little bit more specifically in some of the IAR ISA academic data pieces and then kind of mirror, marry those a little bit and talk about what both data sets kind of say together. Take a brief look at our core phonics screener and then next steps as a district in buildings, what's kind of happening here. Just a reminder, strategic goal one, Portrait of a Graduate, also talking about being academically prepared in all senses of the word. Before I dig into the MAP data, I do want you to be aware that the MAP data was renormed over the summer. So about every five years, they renorm the data and they use the previous two years' data to renorm. So you'll see scores that you've actually seen before, but they might have changed colors from red to blue because the data was renormed. So the RIT scores didn't change, which I'll show you, but the percentile of those may have and often did. So first thing I'm going to look at is the fall reading cohort data. You guys are kind of used to this, but one of the new pieces is kindergarten. Way back when, we used to use AmesWeb for kindergarten and kind of went away from that. And then we didn't have necessarily a bigger assessment screener for kindergarten. So we did add that this year. But you can kind of see, again, the yellow lines, that all those cohort, those groups of kids kind of go through the years together. So you can kind of take a look at them. We're used to seeing kind of a mix of red and blue, but you can see our chart is very blue and that's because of the renorming. What they noticed is those percentiles kind of shifted generally in a positive direction for us. And you can see what the, the norms, that would be like that 50th percentile there. If I were to kind of put percentiles with our data this year for 2025, they're anywhere between the 55 and the 75th percentile, depending on the grade level. The third grade, which we traditionally kind of see and we have a dip, that is in the 49th percentile. It's close to that 50th percentile, but it's a little off. But most of those data pieces are anywhere from the 55th percentile to the 75th percentile. So just wanted to show that to you. I'm going to come back to that just to kind of tie in some IAR stuff as well. So MAP has also report where they can kind of look at, and based on a student's RIT score, they can determine if a student is likely to be proficient on IAR scores. More times than not, they like to run the data off of the spring because it's closest to when IAR assessment is given. But they do have proficiency markings for, for all the levels. So the green and blue, these students are looking good. We still want to push them and grow them, but they're looking good. These kids will show up as proficient or above proficient statistically speaking for the IAR proficiency as it relates to reading. The red group is more than likely our targeted group where a lot of those are below the 20th percentile. We probably have them in interventions or some sort of MTSS support. And then we've got a big chunk of our kids that are approaching. And that's an opportunity for us to dive into a little bit more. And that's something that we'll look at. So even though my percentiles that I was showing you last time were anywhere between the 55th and 75th, for students to be green and blue, they really need to be in the, let's see, probably the 66 through the 75th percentile. So while our kids will average there, if that's the average score, it doesn't mean all of our kids are scoring in that 66 to 75th percentile. So we've got some opportunities here to work on for IAR proficiency as it relates to reading. And then we'll see fall to fall growth here. So these are kids last year and this year, last fall to this fall, the growth. Again, that third grade dip, we do see that. And what, what I enjoy seeing is that our kids bounce back. So one of the things I notice is that, that second grade, our, our kids are growing and doing well. Well, the test makes assumptions that that rate of growth is going to continue, but it doesn't, which is why they, they, that diamond is as high as it is. But then the kids take the assessment and they're not performing as well as we would have liked. It's also why the, the slide I showed you before with that IAR proficiency reading, it's why our growth projections aren't always enough for our kids. Yes, we want our kids to grow there by their projection, but that projection keeps them in that percentile. So if a kid scores in the 42nd percentile, it creates a growth goal to keep them in the 42nd percentile for that winter assessment. Really, we need them to grow more than that. So we always want to see our blue bars higher than that diamond. And you can see it's not getting there, but like I said, our third graders will rebound. This is from fall last year as second graders to fall this year as third graders. It makes assumptions that they're going to continue to grow at the rate they were. We know that that test changes. But also I think our, there's a couple of things going on here. One is that our kids are still learning to read. A lot of phonics programs are packaged in a sense that it assumes they've taught, they've learned everything about phonological awareness by the end of second grade. We don't currently have that. Our foundations runs through third grade. That, that was an additional purchase we made this year because we noticed our kids didn't have all the foundational skills for reading. So that's, I think, a piece of the puzzle. Another piece is that wit and wisdom is hard. It's a great resource, but it's hard. And it has text levels to either meet or exceed in the, the level lexile range of third graders. So what happens is our kids struggle a little bit. So then sometimes we help read with them or for them, or we'll read stuff out loud in class. And we kind of negate a little bit of that productive struggle for our kids. And then when they're coming and taking an assessment like IAR or MAP, we don't read it out loud to them and the test doesn't read it out loud to them. So we're trying to actively work about, yes, supporting our kids, but also removing those scaffolds. So that gradual release model of like, I do as a teacher, we do together, and then you do as a student. We don't always get to the you do as a student independently part, and we're working on that a little bit. So I think that's a piece of the puzzle too. But we do see the kids rebound once they kind of understand the assessment, the testing, how to read to learn and learn to read. We see those scores kind of bounce back a little bit. But I did want to make a note about that data there.
I have a, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm confused. So, so I'm looking at the, the top map, the top grid there. So is this correct? That second grade last year, fall of 2024, these are the same kids that are in the 76th percentile? And then under fall, third grade, they're in the 50th percentile?
Yes. So as second grade last year, they were in the 76th percentile average. And now as third grade, they're in the 50th percentile.
And again, why, why such a huge?
Um, I think there's a lot of things. One of it is the test changes. So the K2 test, the kids can click a button and it can read aloud to them. At third grade on, there's no, like, they, kids have to read and decipher what the question is asking. So between that, between our kids not necessarily having all the foundational phonics skills to be able to decode and code words is a little bit of a struggle, which is why we purchased foundations level three to help with our third grade data. But then also like the wit and wisdom is hard. And we, yes, we start in kindergarten, but it is a higher level reading. Like I said, it's either at grade level or above. And our kids struggle a little bit because they're, they're reading to learn and learning to read at the same time. And they, they haven't mastered those skills yet when they come into third grade.
So, and I'm just curious. So in third grade, what should they be reading? Like, what, picture books? I mean, just, just, so I have an idea of?
I mean, yes, a little bit. It just depends on, they're, they're at different levels of reading. But our wit and wisdom is particularly at grade level or above. So, but some of our kids struggle a little bit. So we'll have stuff within our foundations, our geodes or Haggerty that might help support them at their own reading level to help move them a little bit. But there's a lot of data about exposing kids to grade level enriched texts with engaging content. That, that's where we, we need to expose them to that grade level as much as we can. And then, yes, supports, but also remove those supports as time goes so the kids can do those things, read, pull out clues and main ideas independently. And it's a little bit of a work in progress for us. That's a good question. Any other questions so far?
Mr. Cronin, to answer your question about like, what does a book look like for them? Typically in third grade, you're starting to get into some of those like shorter chapter books. Like some of the classics might be something like Charlotte's Web or something along that line. Does that help to picture it?
And nonfiction.
Yes, yes. Good point.
Yeah, I'm kind of moving away from picture books. James and the Giant Peach?
Yeah. Is that third grade, Sarah?
That was one school, one book.
Yeah, but that, that's about that reading level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is taking, it's kind of going away from the picture with a couple, a sentence or two. Yeah. To kind of intro to chapter books. So to come back to what I said about that IAR proficiency, you can kind of see what the norms are there in the middle. But that 2025 column to the IAR proficiency, you'll see some of our grade levels, and this is on average, some of our grade levels are really close to that IAR proficiency and some of them are a little off. But again, it's why that trying to strive for more growth than what MAP is projecting is so important. It's kind of like that balance of what achievement is and growth are both important, as Mrs. Kinder said with the school report card, and we'll touch on that a little bit too. All right, so now on to math, the fall math cohorts. Our data is a little bit better there. Again, we used to have a little bit of red with blue, but now we're all blue now that the data has been renormed. Our data pieces are anywhere from the 55th percentile all the way to the 79th percentile. Like the eighth grade data piece, that's a 79th percentile there for that. So overall, our RIT scores are a little better in our math than our ELA. It's one of the reasons why we've kind of had a little bit more of a heightened focus on our ELA scores as we take a look at our data and school improvement plans and that. Again, the IAR proficiency for math, we do have a bigger chunk in that blue and green, which is, is great to see. We're at about 35%, though the red group is kind of our targeted intervention group where they're probably getting supports. But we've got a large group in that yellow that we've got some opportunities to, whether through small group instruction, helping unpack the curriculum a little bit, where we have some opportunities to really grow there. And our teachers and our admin are doing a great job in that as well. Yeah. It is, but if, when we look at data pieces later in the year, when you look at that third grade from fall to winter or fall to spring, that growth does tend to bounce back a little bit. They, they are learning so much, yes, yes. So our kids continue to do well.
I'm sorry, I have one more. I have a quick question. Can you go back one screen? So are these, you know, on the right, are these all the same kids pretty much? From reading and, you know, like when I go back to?
Got it. Not necessarily, no. That some of them could be, yes, but not all of them. That's a good question.
Because they're relatively close when I look at both.
Right, yeah. So you mean if they're like yellow in reading or the yellow in math?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, so like, the red is seventeen point four, and the reading, so it's, I mean, it's, it's close, but it's...
So I would say usually with, especially the red group, that is usually your bottom, anywhere between ten to twenty percent. Usually around that fifteen percent mark. But we would like to see that yellow portion. It's kind of like when we look at the panorama data that Dr. Staub showed last month, that that's kind of the middle of the road. Like, we need to push them. We need to get them over there to, into the green and blue. And that's what I was talking about. We've got some opportunities that we can kind of cast a wider net and work on that a little bit.
With this, you're trying to move everybody counterclockwise. So the yellow into the green and the red into the yellow, the yellow into the green.
Yes.
Green into the blue.
And just even growing. Let's see if somebody is approaching, low-end approaching. If we can get them towards that almost high-end approaching proficient, great. Because one thing I will say with this MAP IR proficiency is it's not a hundred percent accurate. It's probably about eighty percent accurate. And actually, it probably under-identifies more than over usually. Like, Erin and I ran a report and did some deep dives last year. Even though IR or MAP says only this number, we always did better on the actual IR. So I think it under-identifies a little bit. It's kind of conservative with its estimations. But I'm okay with that. Nothing's a hundred percent. Okay, so the fall, last year's fall to this year's fall data you see there, again, third grade kind of sees that dip. But generally speaking, you see that chart kind of decrease as the years. You don't expect to see as much growth as you, as the students get older as well. But we do want to see more kids growing more. And again, that growth isn't enough. It's important that we want to see those blue bars over the diamonds because that growth, as Superintendent Kinder kind of pointed out in the IR report, that growth is a huge percent of your summative scores, too.
How does it work when you've got a student that scores, say, like, the ninety-ninth percentile on these? Their growth potential is small because they've already kind of mastered what they're going to master of that. So how does that factor in to some of these overall reports? Does that skew to what is realistic for them? Or does it still... Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, I do. I think it's realistic because the MAP data they use, it's called ESSA. And I don't exactly remember the acronym, but it tests in a smart way. So if the kid gets the question right, it will force another question, like, similar to the same content, but at a higher level. And it will pull it at the next highest or lowest level. So if a kid gets a problem wrong as a fifth grader, it's going to see if they have a question at the fourth grade level. It's not going to jump all the way down to a second grade. Same thing if a sixth grader answers the question right. It's not necessarily going to go to a high school level question. It'll try to pull a question from a seventh grade standard that's similar or builds off of it. So those scores, while they might still very well be in the ninety-ninth percentile, their growth might be just one point. And that's what you'll, usually at the junior high, it's anywhere between one to three points is what their RIT score would improve by to maintain that percent. So it does match the kid. Because it's not just an achievement, it's an adapted test that is a little bit more accurate with the percentage.
So, impossible question. Are the teachers in classrooms seeing the connection between a student who scores a certain way on the test versus how they're performing in class? So are the higher-performing students in class testing higher? Or are the, for example, if you're a student getting Cs and Bs on all your quizzes and tests, is that congruent with how these tests look to them? Or are we having, like, students who aren't taking tests well or are overperforming in class through support? Do you know if there's a connection between how you're performing in class and then how the tests are showing you're performing?
I would say yes, all the above. If I'm being, like, it depends on a case-by-case-by-student basis, but yes. Some of it is you see them performing well without support and they still perform well. You do also see, like I said, sometimes we don't get to the you do. So we read things out loud or read it with them. And then we've overscaffold. So then when they go take the IR or the MAP, they struggle because they're not used to that independence because we have supported them a little too much along the way.
Right, so to ask it, and that answers the question that I asked. But to ask it a different way, are we having a lot of students who are getting good marks in class and getting good grades on the exams and quizzes and going well through conferences? And then getting our tests back from these, the IR and the MAP? And the parents or the student doesn't see the connect... There's a difference in what they're scoring versus, you know, you could go get straight As through the math class and then your test is going to be approaching. Is that a common theme or is it, are we not seeing that?
We do see it a little bit. There is a discrepancy between our grading, our grading practices and what the results end up being. But again, it's one snapshot. I don't take it with, you know, I take it with a grain of salt because it is one snapshot. These tests are just one moment of time for these kids. But we do see a little bit of a discrepancy between our grades and the actual, like, achievement and growth that we do see out of the, out of stuff. And that is something that we're trying to work on with our standards-based grading at the K-2. And then hopefully, eventually, we can get to a point where we can bring it on. But there's not, we got to work on having the same understanding of what below, approaching, meeting, exceeding looks like for all of these levels. Because sometimes we'll take grades and maybe it's for compliance. Everybody turned it in and got a score. Well, that's not necessarily accurate of a student's mastery a little bit, too. So there are some grading discussions and practices that we are all collectively looking at and talking about, too, so that there can be a little bit of a better alignment between what you're seeing coming out of the classroom in terms of their grade mastery versus what you do see on assessment pieces, too.
And a lot of that, and I know Mrs. McCarroll will speak to this, but that work with just understanding what grade-level expectations are, like, what they look like, sound like, feel like, that work is happening in all of our buildings through their school improvement plans, with their teams, with the professional learning community conversations. I mean, just in the past two weeks, I think I've actively seen and heard those conversations where they're talking about, oh, that's what that second grade, well, in third grade. And, you know, like, that kind of articulation to understand. So that's, that's part of the process, too, so that we do understand where we do need to up the bar or see why there's a disconnect or why is this kid getting all good grades but then can't perform, you know, and show that level of understanding, which is considered grade level? Like, we were doing a lot of great work on our teams in all of our buildings with that.
And sometimes it might be something like test anxiety and stuff. So what supports can we give the student to navigate through that process? Because, you know, that's a real issue that might not go away. So that's kind of some of the unwritten curriculum things that we teach along the way, too.
Are accommodations that are in the classroom for assessments and things the same accommodations they get on all of these? So like, if they're like a reader student or a extended time...
I can handle that one. So for a student with a 504 or an IEP, they can definitely receive their accommodations. And those accommodations should be similar with what they get in their day-to-day and their classroom, for their classroom-based assessments, for their district-wide assessments, and then their statewide assessments. So that should be a similar kind of train all throughout their entire school experience. Yes.
That's a good question. All right, anything else? Okay, again, to kind of bring back that tie of what the RIT score is and then what the IR proficiency would be. We do see, even though our averages were anywhere between the sixtieth percentile to the seventy-ninth, if you look at these IR proficiency scores, they're anywhere from the sixty-second percentile for like third grade. That would be the, that would be the sixty-second percentile all the way down to the eighth grade score. That score of two forty-one would put a student in the eighty-fifth percentile. So you can see that's why, like, that it was, that eighty-fifth percentile would indicate that the kid can be proficient in achievement in that IR math. Well, we don't have our kids on average necessarily always scoring in that eighty-fifth percentile. So just to kind of give you a point of reference there. All right, Superintendent Kinder had talked a little bit about this. I'm going to focus more on the academic components in terms of the school designation and the academic reports. But a couple of things I did want to note. When we take a look at that district snapshot, that per pupil expenditure, I know you guys had talked a little bit about it. In terms of some of the comparative districts that we looked at, whether it be demographically, geographically, EAV, the tax base, we do have the second lowest per pupil expenditure of that group of schools that we did look at. Not by a lot, but we do have, we do a great job of doing more with less here. Our overall, as Superintendent Kinder said, our proficient levels were a little bit lower. They're higher above the state, but lower with our comparative districts that we polled. Then our growth for both ELA and math was a little better. The other data piece that I wanted to bring to your attention when we looked at the comparative districts, the districts that had a little bit better, whether it was achievement or growth data, there was a really positive correlation that we noticed when we kind of unpacked our report between the better achievement with, and growth data and then parent engagement with academics. Those scores, I would say ours was anywhere in the thirties to forties. But some of those schools that would be comparative to us, their parent involvement with the academics was in the sixties and seventies percentile. So that data, looking at it from the panorama or five essential piece, that is definitely something we can glean on. And I know our admin, I know Mr. Jay, Ms. Martinez are already working on some of that, improving our school-parent communication partnership with academics, too. So we're already working on those things. But I did see a distinct correlation there that I thought was interesting that I wanted to share with you guys. So again, so summative designations. We had two schools that are exemplary, almost three. We've got a couple of schools that are right there on the cusp, so that's super exciting. And then we had four schools that were commendable. And then we didn't have anybody uncommendable, so that's pretty exciting. That school, you can kind of see how those scores are calculated. I know it's small. I have another example a little bit later. But you'll see that growth component for ELA and math is usually around twenty-five percent of your score. So half of your score is based on that growth, which is why we said that MAP growth, just to stay in that same percentile, isn't enough. We need them to grow a little bit more. And the growth is often calculated for two years of data. It doesn't want to just look at one kid for one year. It will often, if it's available, take two years' worth of data to get those designations. So as Superintendent Kinder had mentioned, this is the last year of this breakdown with that school report card data and those scores. We are, the state is looking for feedback on how that is. But I will tell you, I'm sure that achievement's going to be a component of it. Growth is still going to be a large component. I would be surprised if attendance got removed from there. I do think they're going to look at maybe some of that climate survey stuff. But even our commendable schools, I think, I think maybe Emily, you had pointed out the growth. Like, good things are happening. Like, that's pretty exciting.
Can, can you explain this chart a little more as far as what we're looking at? As far as the index, how that's, because this is, I mean, there's some growth from twenty-three to twenty-four, but this is unbelievable growth, even from just last year. You're looking at ten points in some areas. And so what, what exactly is this? I know it's good, but I don't know what that is.
Okay, let me, I was like, I have it hidden, don't I? Yeah.
Because that's really impressive. That's a lot of growth from... And you can tell from three to four, it's a little bit, but it's a huge amount from last year to this year.
That's where I was saying there were three of them at ten points or higher, yeah.
Okay, you should be able to get to it. It's like twenty-three. Thank you. I had tried to include one, just in case somebody would ask, it would look a little bit bigger. Okay, so you will see this score. Okay, that's not going to make it any bigger. But you'll see kind of the percentages. So the ELA proficiency, so to be proficient, like, they might, they expect maybe this certain level of achievement. So you can get up to eight points on that. And then the proficiency for math is eight points. But if you look at the ELA growth and math growth, that is twenty-six point seven nine percent of your score, or twenty-six points out of a hundred. We are doing a better job of getting more points from that. And you will see the schools that are exemplary are getting most of their points that they can get here. Then you'll see, so the gray box is actually a component, because this is an elementary school piece of data. The gray is typically where you will see the science proficiency. So MIS has it because fifth graders take the ISA and eighth grade has it. So that's a component that gets looked at, too. But their percentages are off a little bit because they don't have the ISA. So it, those percentages get pushed out. But growth is the biggest component. The ELA growth is usually twenty-five to almost twenty-seven percent of your score for each one. So that's, you know, half or a little over half of your score. And it's not just everybody, but then they'll look at your subgroups. So if you've got a population of low income, they will look at the growth of those low-income students to see. They'll, if you meet the threshold for having the number of ML students in your building, they'll look at the growth of the ML, African-American, IEP. If you reach those thresholds, it's not just everybody's growth, but they also look at the subgroup's growth. And they don't, like, they don't want to see negative growth in any of those subgroups either.
So does growth outweigh performance? I guess it's the same question Emily asked.
Absolutely, big time.
Do super-high-performing students not show up as much as some who are growing in a great, great deal? Like, it's growth over specific achievement.
Right, it's progress over perfection a little bit, right? And that's what you see here with this, yes. Growth is more important. It doesn't mean we're not trying to grow those high kids because that's a component, too. They will actually look at where the kid scored last year, whether it was exceeding, at proficiency, approaching, or below. And they'll take those groups and see, did we make growth within those subcategories, too?
There's targets, depending on where the students began, there's targets that are established. So higher achieving kids still have expectation for growth. It's just not as much. It's relative to what they or their similar peers across the state would, would grow. So yeah, but in this designation, growth is weighted far, you know, much more heavy than achievement or proficiency.
And I would, I would assume that would still be the case with whatever the new report card, the new scoring system will be next year. I do think growth is still going to be a very big component of that. But then you have your, like, your English learners to proficiency. So how are those students in particular growing? That's the ELPTP there, the climate survey. Those are easy points that schools can take advantage of because it's whether or not you had enough people to take the survey. They don't even look at the, it's not a matter of what the results say. It's did you have enough parents and students take that climate survey? That's how you can get those points. So that's kind of how you get your overall index score. And then what they'll do, again, this is part of the change, is that they will look at everybody's scores and then take the top ten percent. So it changes every year based on scores. And that top ten percent is exemplary to where something that they're looking at with the new scoring would be, what's the, what's the achievement level to get there? It's not that it's a sliding scale based on everybody's data. So that's something that they'll look at, too.
That striped band at the very bottom of the school correlates with the weight of each of the different categories, if that helps to understand how much everything weighs.
Any other questions on that? And this was just an example, too. So yes, all the buildings look at their own data as... So yes, all the buildings look at their own data as a district. We do a bird's eye view of stuff. But then at curriculum meetings and then every building, they'll break down the standard and the items and the descriptions, because the, the items. So you'll see the number of times, like, this standard kind of presents itself on the test. So that obviously, that one in the middle that showed, that presented itself 31 times, the state has deemed that as probably, you know, college and career readiness standard. It's important. So we need to make sure, like, do we have it as a priority standard? If not, why? And if so, yes, and how are our kids doing? How can we grow that? So that is something that we'll look at. Because yes, all the standards are important, but there are standards that are more important. And that's kind of what we're doing at curriculum meetings and SIP teams kind of diving into a little bit. All right, so I know Superintendent Kinder showed you this a couple of times. But yes, when we look at the state's value and ours, we do, it, it looks decent. We're typically ahead of the state, and I'd like to see that continue. And it has for the most part. But then our comparison group, again, those are more of our districts that are neighboring to us or have similar enrollment numbers, similar enrollment demographics, similar EAVs or per pupil expenditures. And you can see that, that we've got some room for growth. So it's like, okay, what are some of these people doing that we're not? Or how can we lean on each other to grow and get better?
So these comparison group, are they also statewide? Or you had said they're neighbors, but are they?
Yeah, I did not, I picked more geographically close than not. Being one of the biggest districts in the state in terms of, like, ISA competitors, like, we're, we don't have, it's, there's not a lot of districts down south that we can necessarily compare to. I, we picked nine districts, and I would say they're relatively within, I don't know, 30, 45 minutes of us.
So this is our group, the comparison group is what you picked, it's not a,
Correct, we picked it as, as a cabinet. We picked the schools. We knew maybe some, they had a better report card, but we also knew they were nearby and we wanted to see what they had. So it was kind of a combination.
Yeah, we're including it here with the report card. You won't see this actual chart on the public site. What this is, is data pulled from all those places and then compared. Because when you look at the report card, if the state is our only comparator, you're going to be like, okay, yeah, we're doing good, we're above the state average. But clearly, the state average is not our target, right? Like, we look at it for reference, but we want to look at this other context too. Like, how are our similar or geographically close peers doing? And so just as another reference point, it just helps contextualize the data before we can, you know, make any meaning from it aside from the state average. And the, and there's, there are some pretty powerful scatter plots that are on the report card as well. So you can click on it and you can see a dot for every, you know, junior high in the state. And then you can see where our junior high is in relative comparison on like the axis of improvement or, you know, whatever other measure it is, so.
Improvement versus per pupil expenditure, growth versus, like, you can kind of dive into that, it's kind of neat. All right, in terms of, I know you saw some of this, but I'm, again, just kind of giving you a bird's eye view of this. In terms of state and district IAR proficiency and growth. So you can take a look at the state, again, we do perform a little bit better than the state. We want to, it to stay that way. But then also teasing out those other reports to kind of see what else, what are some of our comparative districts doing nearby and what can we glean from that? So you'll see growth too, that state kind of marks at 50%. We do show a little bit more growth, not just in the state, but also the comparative districts when you look. But SIP teams are reviewing these, taking a look at the proficiency and growth and looking at some of the standards as well. And then if I look at the math proficiency and growth, again, that data looks good as well in terms of comparative to the state. But again, we are always, we've traditionally been a little better than the state, want to continue that. But I'm really proud of our MAP, our math growth as well. It was pretty high, not just in comparisons to the state, but the other comparable school districts as well. And then our science data continues to be well, do well. We've got the fifth grade ISA and then the eighth grade. So you'll see, as a state, we have done a little bit better than the state in comparison of that. But you also see in terms of the new performance levels with the state, the science scores kind of dipped a little bit because they noticed that our performance levels were a little elevated as a state, not just us, but as a state. So they revamped those as well. And then I kind of talked about that a little bit. And then, real quick, I want to touch on the core phonics survey. It is a kind of a benchmark data piece that we use. It is not affiliated with foundations. So the core phonics survey is a survey that we take and it's, but it is not affiliated with the alignment of when we teach skills in foundations. But we use it as a screener. The core phonics survey also assumes by the end of second grade, all the kids have been taught the phonics skills. And we know that they necessarily have not at our, in our district. And that's okay, we're getting there. So if you take a look, the core phonics, I did the kindergarten first, second, and third. Kindergarten just looks at A and B, so uppercase and lowercase. The second grade looks through a couple more data pieces. It actually looks at five components. And that's where you'll kind of see the jump up with the first grade data, because it looks at five phonics components. The second grade data looks at 14 phonics components, and third grade looks at all 15 components. So you can kind of see there, but I'm also excited to see that our data continues to get a little better every year. But coming in at kindergarten, we do tend to see similar data coming in. But as our kids kind of go through, you are seeing a little bit of that growth. And these were the fall benchmarks for the last three years. All right, now putting the pieces all together for this, so you can kind of see what we are doing as a district. Our district is working hard, our buildings are working hard, our staff and our students are all working hard there. We've come together to really try to hone in on a few things. Instead of saying, oh, let's work on all things IAR, all things MAP, or all things reading and all things math. We are trying to, through the lens of PLCs, those professional learning communities, focusing on a few things instead of everything. So I know the buildings have been kind of giving you guys reports on what they're doing. Some of them have decided to focus their PLCs on phonics. Some of them are working at really honing in on some of the standards that show up multiple times on that IAR, and they're working on something like making inferences, comprehension. And some of them are really focused in on some like big, high-impact strategies like collective efficacy and teacher clarity. So growth is happening, whether it's through the targeted ELA support with learning more about science of reading, really diving into our curriculum in terms of wit and wisdom, looking at, we call it like teaching with urgency, looking at focus and pacing. That's a lot of feedback we've been hearing from our staff. We've been providing some PD for them on that with wonderful feedback. Data to drive the instruction and small group instruction are all things we're looking to continue with our targeted ELA support. At the same time, still working on math. Our math numbers are a little better, but we want to keep them there. Working on fluency on facts, concepts, so making sure we're taking the time to show the manipulatives, because it's not just a matter of trying to memorize. Latest research says that's not a good strategy for kids. They need that balance of manipulate, manipulatives and conceptual understanding with memorization. Actually working on the strategies, so when we're doing with kids and we're working on number accuracy, we're using strategy, like, we're going to use the count on strategy, we're going to use the count up strategy. Actually naming the strategies that we're working is showing to be super beneficial for some of the targeted math group, math works that we're doing as well. So, and I just wanted to wrap up with a little progress. Every day adds to big results. Our admin and our teachers and our students are doing really good things. I know the data isn't necessarily where we want it to be, but it's getting there. And, you know, I'd rather go slow to go fast. The data is moving in the right direction, we're not leaving people behind on it. I'm just really proud of our administrators and our coaches and our teachers for all the work they're doing, because you can see it, you can feel it, you can hear it in the meetings and the, and everything. So with that, I'll take any other questions you have?
Just want to say thank you. No, very few people, I should say, are as excited to present as you are. So it's always, it's always wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
It does make it so much easier to, like, soak all of this in. Your excitement really is tangible, and I'm sure that that translates to what we're, what we're seeing. You know, having you kind of lead this charge with our, our principals and our administrators and our teachers. So thank you for this. I will say, I feel, I remember the days of like looking at all the data and feeling like, oh my word, like, where do we go? And so I, I know personally for me, I see the change. I'm excited about the change, and I know that those small steps really, there's so much work that goes into those small steps happening. And that will start to snowball and, and continue to move us forward.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'm good, thanks. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. The next one we have is the IASB Board Policy Press 120 revisions, not revisions, revisions.
Yes, we are just as passionate about policy. Not quite, not quite, but governance and policy is important nonetheless. We had a policy committee meeting, board policy committing, meeting today before this meeting. And Member Monson and Member McGowan are the board representatives on that committee. We reviewed press policy issue 120, and it is a lot. It is essentially distilling all of the updates to policy or procedure as a result of all of the legislative, anything that came out of the last legislative session. So it is a great deal, and we took some time to digest that. And we're putting it forth for your review as a board. If you have questions, you can reach out to any one of us or to one of our district leadership, Dr. Staub, Mrs. Robinson, Mrs. McCarroll, or one of our, our board reps, Monson or McGowan. And then at the next board meeting, we'll get back into the cadence of bringing them policy that are bringing forth for review for your approval. And that will be at the December board meeting with the next group of policies.
That's a long day for you guys of data and conversation, so thank you for that. I do want to just point out for anybody who might be looking at home at all this information, there's kind of two different things in here. So there's a memo issue that kind of is like a condensed overview of where things came from. And then when you look actually into the policies, you'll see things, different footnotes and things highlighted in red that really kind of highlight changes that were made and updates that are, that are in there. So you don't feel like you have to read every word of every policy and, and understand what is changing. I'm sorry, for anybody at home that really likes to read all that stuff, there's a couple of tips for you. And then we will move on, if there's no questions about press at the moment. All right, we will move on to our administrative reports.
Any administrative reports from the audience? Mr. Souza, come on up.
I'll be brief, a couple of quick things. The district continues our kind of piloting for the interactive flat panels or giant touch TVs as the potential and probable replacement for ceiling projectors in the future as they phase out. Pilot's been going well, we have them in numerous, or all the K4 buildings at least. And what we're starting to learn, so we have multiple different brands, and we're starting to kind of lean towards one as the, you know, the lead horse brand and model. But Haley, our tech coach, and myself are starting now to kind of put game plan and put together a structured training plan. So we put a new board into room, kind of like, what do you need to know for the first day? What do you need to know maybe on day two, which is probably like a recap of day one plus, plus some extra features? And then what should we show you, what to do on like week two and maybe week four or week five? And, and the analogy would be kind of teaching someone to swim. We're going to walk them in into, you know, like the baby side of the pool and then keep walking all the way down to underneath the diving board. And that way, A, we're not just pushing you in at the diving board side of the pool, and we're not just leaving you at like the two-foot section of the pool either, where you only use like 20% of the capability. So we're starting to kind of plan that out, and as we get a couple more boards in, we're going to be putting that to test. So then hopefully budgetary and everything, if everything goes as well as we hope, this summer potentially bringing you guys a large purchase for a large-scale deployment at numerous classrooms. So that's pretty exciting. And then next up, the governmental E-rate season is starting up. So we'll be looking for proposals and bids for some cabling and firewalls. And you may be thinking, I thought you talked about firewalls last year, and you would be correct. This would just be doing it again, because it's fun. But in reality, what happened is we looked at a lot of firewalls. We liked the package, you know, we took it to the board, you guys approved it. But then over summer, there's a lot of kind of moving parts where, hey, there's some new models coming out, new functionality. So I decided to kind of, you know, pump the brakes, pause, let it go a year, and we'll just reevaluate in winter, spring, and kind of do it again. So you will be hearing me talk about that for the next three or four months. But with that, I'll open up with any of your questions.
Just really appreciate the support you give to our staff as new technology rolls out. As somebody who has been in classrooms with technology with zero training, I am sure that it helps it to be utilized to the best of its ability. I'm excited to see what that provides for our teachers in the classroom.
Yeah, I've, I've sat in a couple rooms, I'm, I'm working my goals to get through to every, every school and numerous classrooms. But just watching teachers kind of perform or, you know, do what they do, and it's actually kind of interesting for me. So I'm, I'm looking at the questions and answers, but then also like, is there a way to, what you're doing is maybe seven steps. Is there a way to bring that down to six? For example, so in one classroom, we ordered a couple wireless keyboards with the built-in trackpad, just one little unit, so you could walk around. If you needed, bring up a website real quick, you can be anywhere in the classroom, because it's wireless, type it in, use a trackpad as a mouse. So just like little things like that, it's like 40 bucks, and that might actually make a pretty good difference for some teachers. So just little things like that, we're just kind of picking up. You don't really see that unless you're in a classroom or talking to teachers, because it's not like a help-us-ticket item, you know, some things like that. So, you know, as always, the tech department's always looking for work and looking for ways to make things better. And we hope to continue meeting your expectations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a real quick, more for our families out there that are paying attention or if our staff and our board want to share this with families. Just a reminder that even though our primary goal in schools is working on academics and building our students to be better community members, I want to make sure that families also know that we have resources for our families in need, especially as we're getting into holiday breaks and breaks from school over the next few months, that if families do need things from the community such as food stability, housing stability, we have resources on our website. But if anybody needs help navigating those, they can call the office, our social workers or our counselors at any of our buildings, and they can help them navigate those resources as well. So, oh, thank you, look at this, Erin's pulling that up. So if you go to the, on the website, the four families, the very second tab there is a community resources page. So it's divided up into the types of assistance that are in our communities. And then, like I said, they can go on the website and find these. Or if that's difficult for some family members, they can even reach out to our schools and they can help them navigate these waters. So just a real quick reminder that those resources are out there for families.
All right, and I just have a few additional announcements. I just wanted to thank all of our staff members and partners who planned or led all of our Veterans Day celebrations and recognitions. And also a special thank you and note of gratitude to all of our veterans in the district and in our community and in our families who have served. Mr. Jay put together a really awesome ensemble of glimpses of what was going on in all of our buildings from, you know, over a span of several days, and it was extremely impressive. And I'm proud to say that we have, we do a really good job of a community of showing our recognition and appreciation for our veterans. Parent-teacher conferences were a great success. We had 95-plus percent participation with our elementary buildings, approximately 75% at intermediate, and about 50% at junior high, which is pretty typical. But there is a great deal of communication going on otherwise via parent square and email and phone call communication as well. So that's a great opportunity for our staff and we, and our families, and we appreciate the effort of our staff to put that extra effort in. The calendar for the 26, 27 school year has gone to committee. We have a draft form. We'll be bringing that next month for the, the board to review and for the community to see. I know many are anxiously awaiting that as they plan their summer and year ahead for their families. And then finally, next week, it's already Thanksgiving time. So Wednesday, the 26th through Thursday, Friday, is our Thanksgiving holiday break, a much-needed time to rest and recharge and be grateful. We certainly have a lot to be grateful for in our Menoka 201 community, and so I wish you all the best and an enjoyable Thanksgiving. Thank you.
For board topics, I just wanted to note, the board will be attending the board conferences next weekend, where we have the opportunity to do not only continued education, but some team building as a board, which I think each board member here can attest that that really does help us work through kind of our harder moments in the boardroom, having that established relationship with each other. So looking forward to those continued education pieces. In the past, those have directly brought back things that we've provided to the district or to the board, such as our board member handbook was a big one I can think of, and just learning new ways that we can bring positive government, governance back to the district. Does anybody else have any other board topics?
I did. I just wanted to make a statement, and she just spoke. Mrs. McCarroll, she led our Menoka Community and Connection meeting last week. It was our first one after the rebranding, if you will. And you just did a great job presenting a lot of data again, and, and she was just as enthusiastic as she was this evening. So thank you, and we had great dialogue. I think for the past few years that I've been part of the committee, that was, even we weren't mighty in numbers, but we were definitely mighty in dialogue. So thank you for leading that effort.
Thank you for that. Any other board topics tonight? All right. With that, we have no need for executive session tonight, so I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Adam, are you going to make it home in time?